Hello, everybody. I'm gonna call the Thursday. I'm gonna call the Thursday, June 26th meeting, uh, business meeting in Norbert Borough Council to order. Uh, stand for the pledge. My pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Let's start, so you follow the rules?
Yes, hold on. Are, are you slow today?
Oh, yes, sir.
What's up?
Oh, I'm sorry.
All right, uh, President Bush?
Here.
Vice President Rickards?
Here.
Councilmember Winston?
Here.
Councilmember Burak?
She's here.
I see her online.
Yeah.
She is virtual.
Oh, she is.
She is.
Uh, Councilmember Spear?
Here.
Councilmember Godini?
Here.
Councilmember Samson?
Here.
And Mayor Deutsch?
Here.
Brief comments, as you may have seen online, SEPTA passed its, uh, its so-called doomsday budget, uh, which would involve Norbert losing, uh, our train line and the 44 bus, uh, at the end of the year. We remain hopeful that a funding solution can be found. Uh, if this Pennsylvania State House has passed a resolution which would, uh, fund SEPTA, uh, to avoid this calamity. Um, it's up to the Pennsylvania State House now whether to pass a, they said, whether to pass a companion bill or as part of the budget negotiations to sort out, uh, the, the SEPTA funding issue. We expect that the state budget will be resolved in the next month or two. Um, so, uh, I encourage you to, uh, contact, uh, state senators. Our, our local state senator, uh, Capulet, Amanda Capuletta is strongly in favor of SEPTA. Has been, you know, active at various rallies and is committed to making sure that, uh, SEPTA gets its funding. But there are a number of, uh, I think, in fact, the Democratic Caucus is pretty united behind this. Uh, if you reach out to any Republican state senators that you have, uh, access to or contact to, uh, the state senate majority leader would be a, a good person, uh, to default to contacting. But, uh, it's still an issue. It still requires, uh, attention and, uh, people's voices to be raised on this. So we are hopeful, but, uh, there's still action to be taken in the state law. Mayor Deutsch?
Okay, um, next week, we have Norbert's signature event, biggest event of the year. It's the Fourth of July, and it's been going on for many, many decades. And, uh, your Fourth of July committee has been working hard to get everything up and running. But we need, we need you guys. We need more volunteers for, uh, some daytime activities to help cover some of the events and a little bit for the nighttime. We need, uh, uh, participants in the bucket, maybe. So, um, so if you want to give an hour or two to help support the biggest event of the year, we would love to have you, and we're asking for your help. Um, you can go to norbertfireworks.com, I believe it's dot com. Um, and there's a sign up, uh, genie, uh, genie, and, um, and give your, put your name in for an hour or two and help create the magic.
Thank you. Let's start, so you report for us?
Absolutely. Um, so just wanted to report that we are continuing to make progress on finalizing the things we need to do with our contractor for the Amtrak Bridge. Um, so we look to be, uh, issuing the, uh, notice to proceed very soon. Uh, we also have Jesse Gormlan, uh, here today formally, thank you. Uh, so we'll be discussing that with him later. I know that there's an agenda item for him to, um, discuss. Uh, so any questions, he's here to help with that. Um, also, I wanted to give an update. We finalized all of our site mapping for our new website. So all of the information now is in the hands of our company. So they are doing now the full transfer over, sorting everything and all of the spots where it needs to go, uh, uploading all of the data that we have from our current website to the new website. So we hope that that will be launched very soon, a couple of weeks. So we'll give you, uh, virtual ribbon cutting. I don't know if that's a thing yet. But we'll, we'll do something to announce.
Okay.
Um, and then otherwise, uh, lots of things have been going on. It's all in my report, but the other thing that I just want to bring to your attention, which I already have updated you on, but, um, our property manager, 4201 Seabine, um, has given us notice to, uh, terminate their services. So I have been in contact with a couple of potential companies. I hope to have those, uh, um, we're doing a, uh, uh, I'm sorry, a services summary. So they're gonna be providing response to that. So that will be, uh, before you, um, my, my goal is to get that to you for the July agenda so that we can appoint a new property manager for the Seabine property. Um, otherwise, just a, a busy month working on permit things. So a lot of things on the agenda, uh, this evening have things that we've been working on diligently in the office. Um, there is also, I'll note, uh, an electric leaf blower workshop that was held. Uh, the EAC was involved in this and along with Laura Marion and Haverford Township, excuse me. Um, and so I've heard, uh, interest expressed and possibly, uh, working on an ordinance with that. So I've been in touch with Laura Marion to, uh, work with them as they develop their ordinance. We can work on a concurrent ordinance here and make sense for us. So lots of great things going on, and also we have a new summer intern. She started last week, so she'll be here Mondays and Tuesdays in the office, helping us out with a number of projects that we have going on. So we're excited to have her.
Right, and we're still expecting the bridge contractor to come before us and give us a, a discussion of their timeline?
Yes, that's correct. So we expect that to happen in September.
Okay. All right, thank you. Uh, we'll move on to public comment. I see lots of folks here, so just hold on a sec. Let me go over the rules. It's, uh, limited to three minutes, and please begin by giving your name and your, your address, and then we'll start the time. Comments should be directed to council, to us. Uh, and that's about it. So I will start with, uh, folks in the room. So yeah, if you'd like to stand up and give us your name and your address, you can begin your comment.
Uh, yes, my name is Kathleen Hutchinson. I live at 1334 Montgomery Avenue, apartment D2. I'm the president of the Wimont condo association as well as being a Norbert resident. Um, what I'm hearing today is about the misclassification of, uh, solid waste, um, and over-chargement of condo owners. So according to the solid waste ordinance, there's three classifications. And, uh, my reading of that, uh, condos should fall into the third classification, which is commercial or residential properties with more than five individual family dwellings. We have 32 units in the Wimont building. Um, the actual way for the budget that it looks like, and for my conversations with Maggie, that things are being determined for that cost is by a land use description that Montgomery, that Montgomery County assigns, which gives apartments an A and residential an R. So that's lumping all apartments for all condo buildings into the first classification, um, which charges $818 for this year. Apartments are being charged, uh, $204 this year. So that's a huge disparity in those charges. Um, which, when you count, calculate that out across 32 units, actually ends up to be, uh, over $38,000 for last year and this year, which is where I see the discrepancy being. Uh, so I'd like to have the council address why we're not following the classifications in the actual ordinance, the way that it reads, as opposed to using something that Montgomery County has determined. Yeah, I understand that makes it easier, but when you go back to the November, uh, 2023 meeting minutes, it looks like the contractor actually built, bid out the contract by talking about, you know, this many in A classification, this many in B classification, this many in C classification, as far as property goes within the borough, um, not A, R, and C, which is what's in the count, which was what is in the budget for last year and for this year for solid waste collection. Um, so I'd like to hear what you guys can say to address that. Um, and also, if you think about it, there's an unfairness to residents. If I'm a resident in a condo, which is, used to be an apartment building, and I'm charging, being paid eight, over $800, and a renter, who that apartment building owner is passing that cost on to them, I'm sure, is only getting charged, you know, $204. As a resident, I have more investment in this community, sorry, as an owner in this community, I have more investment than somebody who's leasing an apartment here. So, um, it just seems like there's an unfair or disadvantage to condo owners as far as solid waste classifications as they're being in right now. So, thank you. And if you guys would prefer to meet about this another time, I, I'm happy to talk to you about this. I've done a lot of digging into what's on the borough's website, um, you know, different properties around Norbert and how their contractors actually being, you know, hauled away. Um, so if you guys prefer to talk to me later, I, I can give you additional information as well. I know way more than I could talk about in just three minutes. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. We, we, you know, so we received your email, so we asked our, our solicitor, uh, to take a look at, you know, your concerns and to come up with an initial response. John, do you have two?
Just a couple of questions. So it is a condo unit?
Yeah, it's a condo unit.
So you are an owner of that unit?
I'm the individual, yes.
And you'd be able to transfer all that?
Yes.
That unit to somebody else?
Yep.
And there's 32 individual units in that condo?
In the building, yes, sir.
Each with their own owners?
Each with their own owner and their own deed.
Okay, and so their ability to then transfer that deed to somebody else? I mean, the, I think your, the, the misconnection is the fact that this refers to a property. And a property is the condo unit, not the condominium homeowners association itself, but the unit within that building, uh, whether it's a single-family house, standalone house, or a condo unit or HOA unit, you're able to, if you're the owner, you can transfer that, you get the bill, you get the tax bill, and you get the solid waste bill. As opposed to an apartment, the, the, you cannot sell, sell or transfer an apartment unit. There's one person, like if you were lived in an apartment building, you'd have one owner of all 32 units, and you'd be paying them as a plan, right? And then that apartment owner would be responsible for paying the total tax bill for everything. So I don't think there's a problem with the classifications and how it's set up. It's a different issue, and it's up to council at a time if you want to evaluate the fees that are charged for those different classifications. That's set by resolution. Uh, I think, uh, this, this was the first step, but I recall that even before, they didn't, they didn't have any real classifications different from commercial or residential. Um, it could certainly be more finely tailored in the future if you wanted to, um, because the fees aren't set in the ordinance itself. And it does provide the ability to set different classifications, uh, or different fees based upon different classifications. Um, so fairness is, is, is one issue, I, I think, and that's something that if council wants to address, it certainly can. But conflict is, I, I don't think in the code. For example, if you had a single-family residence and you decided to rent that single-family residence out as an apartment, it's still a single-family residence, not a single apartment building. And then the person who's responsible for that apartment, you know, single-family residence, would have to still pay the bill. So I think there's two different things we're talking about here. Again, I, I don't, I don't see a problem with the code. I could see what you're saying about maybe make the classifications tailored more to actually what is the residential dwelling, um, whether it's a single-family house or a smaller condo unit.
So I, I do want to acknowledge that, you know, you're, you're considering that, well, it's the same size property. If it were an apartment, it would be charged a lot less. I, I understand that that is, you know, that would be infuriating if it were me. Um, so it was not an intended consequence to, you know, just to specify, well, if it's the same size dwelling, if it's a rental, if it's a, um, so we'll have to consider that. I mean, I think what John is saying is that we are within our code. Like what we are charging you appears to be what fits the ordinance. Right.
And I think one of the, I think the mindset might have been that you have the right, and I understand that you don't have individual trash hauling of your units. Is that correct?
No, we have, what, we have two dumpsters.
You have two dumpsters, right. But you could, if you wanted to have individual trash hauling for your units. I'm not saying that would work. I'm not sure any of the room for it, but I think when the code was written, they would, they were assuming that smaller, that each unit, each resident with a single family or two units would have their own trash cans and not dumpsters. And that might have been why the fee was adjusted differently.
In, in the proposal from the trash hauler we currently have, it actually specifies in there, in the, the proposal that was adopted by the borough in November of 2023, it says anything more than 10 family units has to have a dumpster. They actually denote it that in their contract.
Yeah, and, and I, I think that would not, that would not be in line with what the code says. I mean, that, it's if you had 10, what's it say? Um, five or more units within a single property. So again, if you had five units, I know hypothetically speaking, if you had a huge condo unit and you could go in there and there are five separate individual families set up, you know, five kitchens in your one unit, that condo unit would have five families, and then that would qualify. I understand that's not what you have, but the, the, the classification would be, or should be, um, one property, uh, an apartment building, which would be, or a commercial building, that has more than five units would need to have a dumpster. Doesn't mean you can have a dumpster, um, if you have less than that, but you'd be required to have a dumpster if you had more than five units on a property. And your properties are all individual. So I'd have to look at that, that contract.
But, but it's two different, like, yeah, so like the, the first question that you would raise is whether with, in the letter of a law and your announcements as we are, and then the second question is, you know, if it, like, is it, is it fair? Right, and should we?
And I don't think you need to change the law, but again, the, the law says that each year you can adjust, you can look at the high resolution to, to make sure that it's on point. So it would be something you'd want to look at for next year to see if there's, if you could finally tailor it more if, if council's to decide.
Yeah, and I'm glad that you raised that because I actually thought that large condos were in the same classification as apartments. So I was not aware of that. It's great for you to be brave to share that.
But with the clear, I mean, it's, there, you should be able to do something that, I would ask that you work with borough administration because they have to make sure.
Yeah, we're not, we're not gonna make a change here.
Yeah, we're not making a change today.
So what, what I would suggest is that we will allow our, our borough staff to consider this issue, and when it comes time to set fees for next year, so we'll be setting the, the trash fees for next year later on, and we will, you know, consider your situation. As we set our fees for, for next, for next year.
Can I add what I thought was a third issue too, when we talked briefly in the hallway, was the enforcement? I mean, you showed pictures as of recent, of the last two weeks, of an apartment complex at Dudley, which was actually one of the motivating apartments, because this is what's, that had, again, from the picture, it looked like 15 trash cans out there, that they should absolutely have a dumpster because there's more than 10 units, and we're not seemingly enforcing that. So could, maybe it would be helpful if you shared those pictures, um, with us after the meeting?
It's, it's a code enforcement issue, so, I mean, we could enforce that if they don't have a dumpster.
And if you guys are gonna address the code, I would like to ask that you make it so that condo buildings can opt out. I mean, if I opt out, I, we've, we've called private haulers. We would be at $7,000 a year for my 32 units. $7,000 a year versus $800 per unit, which, $7,000 divided by 32, that's under $220 per person, or per unit, which would put us in line with what you're charging apartment complexes. So again, when we go back to the fairness issue, if we're gonna update the ordinance, update the ordinance to allow large condos to, to opt out of, of borough collection.
I mean, we're not necessarily the ones who can make that decision. We have a contract with our trash hauler. They may or may not allow us to have individuals opt out.
I, we're, we're committed it with the contract through the end of 2027. I would have to reach out to them to see if there's even an opt-out option. And if, if you did opt out, I don't know that they would give us anything back for it.
Charge apartments more. I mean, that's, I mean, you're saying, you're saying you're not gonna do anything to lower my bill. Well, then my next phrase is, is let's make these equal. So lower my bill and raise the apartment bill and make us meet in the middle. Like how, I, that's, that's, to me, is a fair solution there. Because if we're, if, if I have, if you're gonna put me in a residential category, was a 200,000 square foot, sorry, 2,000 square foot house that can have an occupancy, I don't know what the max occupancy in Norbert is, but it's definitely more than my max occupancy for my two-bedroom apartment. So there needs to be some equity in that.
And again, I would say that's, I think, what the ordinance contemplated with the ability to make those evaluations each year based on information, I guess.
Okay, so we'll, we'll consider this when we're looking at fees. I'll also point out that we are hopeful that when this trash contract expires, we will be able to work with Laura Marion, who has an entirely different, uh, fee setup. It's based on number of, yeah, based on usage, based on numbers of garbage cans and dumpster size. So it would be, you know, it would be apples to apples, everybody would be paying the same fee, well, the same per, per amount of trash. But that's a couple of years in the future, so, uh, we'll discuss this as we, as we go forward, uh, coming to fees. And we can let you know when we're discussing trash fees, uh, as a council. It'll probably be October, November, maybe, it's later, it'll be later in the year, because we have to set them by the end of the year.
And the county does track, like, information on condominiums? So that, like?
Well, we'd have to change the ordinance. That might be difficult.
No, no, that's not in the ordinance. That's by your practice. Your practice is to use that land use description, but ordinance just talks about type of property and, and it does not refer back to anything from Montgomery County to assign those.
All right, well, we'll, we'll, we'll let our staff, you know, look at the issue and come back with a recommendation to council, and then we'll discuss it again, uh, later in the year. We'll let you know when it comes up.
And just, can I just want to clarify a question, because it is interesting to hear that. So we are in the next, probably, what, six months, gonna start thinking about a trash contract that's 18 months out. I don't know that it would have dawned on me that condo owners would have said, actually, we want to opt out and figure this out ourselves. So that's kind of new information as well, that we should probably, there's, there's only, what, three? I'm, yeah. Thinking about when we put them into the next contract. I mean, part of the issue is that we didn't want a bunch of different haulers on our streets because it's so congested, but that is a good kind of data point, I think, for us to consider. Yeah, I mean, ultimate properties of condo buildings and apartment buildings in Norbert is not, is not high. There's not a lot of us. Um, in fact, I think we're in the largest building.
And I think that might be a unique situation. I mean, you could have condos for four, you know, units.
Right.
And that might, that might be treated differently than this many units. My recollection is, and I think President Bush might remember, that when this ordinance was being put into place, it was near the end of the year, and we were kind of pressed for time because of the contract and the need to get something in place. And at that point in time, there were some discussions about bringing in private hauling.
Right.
Then the borough would be in a position with, to give people 30 days' notice to say, hey, we're not gonna pick your trash up anymore, find somebody new. And that was why we said, well, we're not going to do private hauling right now because of that. Plus, we need to figure out what the contract situation was. So that press for time might have actually prevented that from, uh, further considerations.
And, and this will go to FNA, I'm assuming?
Uh, yeah, the fee schedule, anything related to the fee schedule tends to go to FNA.
Yeah, so we'll just need to do some digging to pull out all of the condo units and then just start playing with the numbers. If we raise rates for some and decrease rates for others, we'll just play with the numbers because ultimately we still have to end up with the same amount of collection so that we're not out of pocket for trash collection for everybody. Um, but it's, that's a resolution for, for the fees, so, um, it'll take us some time to dig through that. Uh, you know, the reason why we use county classifications is because, uh, we don't have the, the fine-tune, you know, data, but there, as you said, there's not as many condo units, so we could pull those out. Um, so we just have to identify them and then just come up with different, um, different fees. But we still have to make sure that we're consistent with our ordinance. So, but it'll just be staff time to, to research all of this.
But I'm, I'm curious about that, not knowing the classifications, because if you go back to that bid, the one that you directed me to from November of 2023, it calls out a number of properties that fit the A, B, and C categories. So the, the contractor, the trash hauler that we went with, had that information at some point. So at some point, the borough must have supplied that information to them. And that was sort of a half years ago, and that was November, or whenever the bid went out for them, so.
Right, and, and again, I don't want to misstate anything on the record here, um, because again, I wasn't here at the time, but I didn't start to look into all of this to figure out what was going on. So, um, it, it sounds like, uh, council is directing me to, to take a look into this further, so I will take a look into this further.
That is the direction, thanks, yes.
Yeah, okay, thanks, there you go.
All right, thanks, and I'd like to, we're not gonna debate for this time because we don't have the information, so. And, thank you. Anybody else? I mean, I know you're all here, a lot of you are here to support. You're welcome to make the public comments if you wish, or?
I just have one question. Sorry, Steve, I, I, I just live in the same building, uh, as, as I, and, uh, I'm, I'm just curious. We're not having to have our yard waste removed by you guys. We're actually paying our, our yard contractor, our, our landscaper to do all of that stuff. Did, if we're paying like a private house and everything, would you guys pick, pick up our yard waste too?
Uh, yes, you're entitled to leave your, well?
Well, I would think it's, it's for, again, for individual properties. I mean, if, if you, if you.
Well, it's only common and, 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 you know, you understand how that works.
I understand how that works. I mean, if you're saying that you're gonna leave out your yard waste for 32 different properties on the street, that's not what's intis, that's not what was.
Isn't that what my taxes are paying then?
No, your taxes are paying for you individually to put out your yard waste for your property and your, for your property, and for your property. Uh, and again, that's why it's almost like an apartment building in that regard, because then you're almost acting like an apartment building through the association because you're all working together in that regard. Again, the, the, this ordinance contemplates that a unit has, and you would have, and you may not have the right because of your condo documents, you would have the right to put out your own trash can if you wanted to put out your own trash can, because you are your own unit, you're a single-family unit. I understand you're not doing that.
But we could, if we're, and, and if we start paying $800 a, a year for trash removal, that's one thing that could happen.
You could do that.
Okay, thank you.
And, and again, if you wanted to put out your leaf bags because whatever was taken up from your house, you know, you could do that, but it's not.
How would we divide that out? How would we know which is or are?
I mean, and again, we're talking hypothetically here, and I think.
And the weeds here.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I don't know how much you're, and all that being said, I'm not sure how much you're generating trash on, on a, on a basis, and we have the director of public works here, but, I mean, if you're talking about just the same as a couple of residential properties would put out, yeah, you are paying for that. It's something you should do if you're talking about putting out, you know, huge amounts that would overwhelm your class. That's not what was counted.
Thank you.
So I, I mean, if it's not that much, maybe you want to speak to the borough about that for the first trash. I'm, I'm not sure who, who does the waste removal for, uh, does Mascaro's do that?
Right, you'd have to look at their contract and see if it says above a certain number of units, it has to be combined.
Well, we'd have to look at that to see if they're calculating that correctly, yeah, but.
Thanks, I appreciate it.
But you're right, that's, that is, that's sort of not happening at both places.
Thank you.
Are we supposed to make a public comments? All right, thanks. I will move to online. Someone, their hand raised?
Hi, this is Carol Marie Scanlon on Seabahn Avenue. I would like to ask, um, is the borough still in active conversation with a private school to take over 201 Seabine, the old Norbert School? And my second question is, um, are there plans or what's the status of the plans to send out the appraisal or the assessment for the park side, the Montgomery Avenue side of 201?
So we are still in negotiations. There's no substantive change since last month. We are still waiting to hear an offer from this school and see if they are seriously interested in the property. We have no other update. We have taken no other action. We will be voting next month on a property manager for the property. That's the extent of our agenda items for Seabine.
We, we have not requested an appraisal.
Yeah, and we have not requested an appraisal at this time. Thank you, Carol Marie.
Thank you.
Anybody else wish to make a public comment? Okay, um, public comment is closed. And I do want to thank you all for coming out and, uh, making it clear, uh, your concerns here. And we're sure you, we will look into it and we'll let you know when it comes up again as a council agenda. All right, let's move on to the consent agenda. Someone like to make a motion?
I move to approve the consent agenda items A, B, and C.
Second?
I'll second.
Good. Any discussion of the consent agenda? All right, let's vote on consent agenda items A, B, and C. Uh, all those in favor? All right, it is unanimous. Consideration items. First is the employee handbook.
That's, Jen?
That's, Jen?
Sorry.
Page?
Sorry, twenty-five, okay. I move that Borough Council approve the updates to the Darwith Borough Play Manual as presented.
Second?
I'll second, because I'm going to be the one to talk, so.
Okay, go ahead and cast the changes to the employee.
Yep, so as you know, we all approved the proposed changes at the last meeting. There were some specific language questions that I needed your approval for to add back into the, or certain concepts that we approved, but we didn't have the specific language for. That's now in this edited version, so the things like we had talked about, the bereavement policy, for example. In doing that, we also, Jeff, I believe, caught that somehow in the transmission of the draft from Allen to me, there were some very specific provisions that somehow got deleted. We don't know how. Basically related to time off for lunch, lunch breaks, et cetera, and the timing of that. And we want to make sure that, you know, not everybody's taking lunch at the same time, but there are people in the office. So that, in addition to the edits to reflect what you all agreed upon at the last meeting, there are very specific additions that were put back in that somehow got dropped out in the various drafts.
Okay, just want to summarize the changes that were made.
Yeah, so, let me pull it up then. I guess we're having trouble dissembling that. This doesn't have the red, but sorry. Do you have the line, the actual changes, the redline version of it? I'm sorry, I had closed the F and A, I had the redline changes. F and A packet.
Oh, well, they're on page twenty-six of this thing. I can summarize it. All right, there's one about the work week. It specifies that lunch is to be taken between eleven and two. If you take a half day, you don't get paid lunch. The borough will conduct a motor vehicle records check for anybody authorized to operate a borough-owned vehicle. And then fire volunteer, people in the fire company who respond will be paid for their normal shift if they respond to a fire call during their shift. Injuries while serving as a firefighter will be covered by the fire department and not by the borough.
Those were the specific things that got dropped out.
Okay, and you discussed an F and A?
Yes.
An F and A, approve the changes? Any concerns with the changes? Okay, any further discussion of these changes? Let's vote on the changes. All right, let's vote on these changes to the employee manual. All those in favor? Any opposed? All right, it's unanimous. Thank you for your attention to the document. Obviously, it took a lot to find those, those things that dropped out. Okay.
Well, actually, I have to thank Emily for that, and Jeff, because they were the ones who picked up on those dropped provisions. And again, I went back and looked on mine, and it was, they weren't on the version that got sent to me way back when, so I don't know how they got this.
Credit where credit is due, thank you. All right, let's move to the next consideration item. Put me a solicitor to Nida.
I move that Borough Council appoint James Gallagher, Esquire of Kilkenny Law, as the Solicitor to the Norbert Industrial Development Authority at the hourly rate of a hundred eighty-five dollars.
I'll second.
Okay. Summarize. Representative Kilkenny Law here today.
Say, there's no conflict by having an IDA. Actually, it's passed to represented IDAs and municipalities. It takes a special type of law and understanding to do IDAs. James Gallagher from my firm has that background for development authorities and redevelopment authorities. And we're happy to be considered for the position. Obviously, it helps when we're working together on matters. But since he has that level of expertise, he would sort of be on his own, obviously with me there, but focusing on the IDA. And it's the same rate that Kilkenny Law's charged for the general work was not for the borough.
Okay. Go ahead, Eric.
So, you know, one of the somewhat maybe informal, formal duties of this council is to, you know, help us, connect us with people looking to, you know, participate in a loan deal. I assume he's well-connected to that audience and might be able to?
I think the firm is. I don't know if that's really the job of the solicitor itself, but he certainly threw the work on, and I think my firm's work, for example, Chonkin County is on the redevelopment authority of Montgomery County. He had the redevelopment authority. James works with Bucks County Redevelopment Authority. Certainly, businesses and locations come in. I can't say he has roots to Norbert Borough, but he certainly has the experience and connection through what he does, if anyone's looking for that work.
Right, it's just, what happens is that, you know, usually if a nonprofit is looking to participate, to get, to take advantage of this, they, you know, are looking for knowing the, you know, what their options are.
Yeah, and again, certainly through our work in other municipalities, over forty municipalities, people are aware of our firm, they'll be aware of that as an option. And certainly, we'd be happy to put it out that we represent the Norbert IDA if we were to be appointed to spread that word.
Perhaps you will rejoin us.
Well, that's, but who is, is there a current chair?
Nida needs a reorganization meeting.
And shows we say that, I believe, the current chair is the mayor-elect.
Is the mayor, well, the presumptive mayor.
Okay, well, let's.
The presumptive chair, I would say, I'm not sure he is.
And the current solicitor is Fred Wentz, who is retiring, who is also retiring from the zoning hearing board, which is the other nomination, are you denying?
Is there a cap on legal fees before it has to come before council for approval, or is it?
Nida's an authority, so they have a lot of power. They can, they can do things. I mean, they have their own money, right? They have their own money, but they're also.
I mean, having been a member before, we don't have any legal expenses unless there's a deal.
Okay.
Because there's nothing else to do, really, except perhaps.
And that's great, I'm just asking if there's a cap on those fees?
Right, but the point is that the fees come out of the deal.
Okay, okay, so the borough is not paying for the fees, for the fees for this?
Right.
Okay.
Correct, now, my understanding, there might be some administrative work needing to set things up. He, Gallagher actually emailed me today. I believe he's sent in some documents and necessary to get going on things. And I told him, why don't we wait till tomorrow to make sure everything's official? Why don't we wait till tomorrow to make sure we're formally appointed before we open the file to get started on that work? But he's ready and able and willing to start the work.
Got you.
Okay, so, any other concerns? All right, let's vote to, for the appointment of the solicitor to Nida. All those in favor? Okay, it's unanimous, and I think he is at this point authorized to do what it takes to get Nida up and running again. As far as I'm concerned.
And I'm going to email the firm to do an announcement, also within the announcement to put a feel out if anyone needs the assistance.
Right, but that would satisfy what I'm saying.
Sounds good.
And, Mr. President, if I may, just a quick addendum to, or not addendum, but correction to the next consideration item. It reads appointment of solicitor to the zoning hearing board. Council does not legally appoint a solicitor to the zoning hearing board. You are approving the fee schedule of the solicitor who the zoning hearing board appointed for themselves. So only the zoning hearing board can appoint their own solicitor. So I just want to make that clear, that the motion is not to appoint the solicitor, but to approve the fees for that solicitor.
All right, I will take a motion to approve the fees of the solicitor for the zoning hearing board.
Seven.
Second.
All right. I think as our managers explain, the zoning hearing board, current solicitor is retiring. They have chosen their preferred solicitor, as is their right. So it is up to council to approve the fee schedule, since we're paying the bills. Any questions or comments there? All right, let's vote on approving the fee schedule of the solicitor for the zoning hearing board. All those in favor? Okay, so. Right, fee schedule update, N D.
I move that Borough Council approve Resolution, Resolution twenty-five dash thirteen, fee schedule update.
I'll second.
Okay. Are we good here? That's something, yeah. All right, we're gonna.
I'm sorry.
Everything okay with that last motion, or do you, okay?
Yeah, who, I'm sorry, who settled that one?
Like, this, this current one?
No, I'm sorry, for the?
The Z H B fee?
No, not the fee schedule.
So the Z H B fee, Cindy, you made the motion, I think.
And I sent Michael for the Z H B.
Okay, I'm sorry, thank you. And then this motion, we have.
We are now, we are now on the fee schedules. I moved, like, Jim, seconded by Mike.
Okay.
Ready for you to explain what we're updating here.
Okay, perfect. Let me scroll down to that page. Okay, so a couple changes. I know we keep going back to the fee schedule, so thank you as we kind of develop these permits and go through the process of procedure and bringing some order to what we have. So the first is an update to the electrical vehicle charging. This was already passed by council, but this is now just reflecting, so the fee schedule just reflects what you've already adopted by resolution. So this is just to codify that within the fee schedule, the thirty-two cents per kilowatt hour, which we did at the last month's meeting. We also had a discussion about the recycling bin replacement. We order a certain number every single year. So when folks call to say there is lowway, or was taken by somebody else, or has cracked and is no longer functional, can they get a replacement? We say yes. But Jeff informed us that we have gone through our entire allotment, that we had purchased for the entire year. So folks are requesting replacements at a much higher rate than we have seen in the past. And we do know how many bins you replace in a given year, because you put the request in through my gov. So we just have, if you're requesting multiples, so we've just decided that we would like to make a recommendation that everyone is entitled to one replacement bin per year. If you request more than that, you have to pay for it, just because they are not inexpensive. The other thing that we're looking to do is that Public Works is actually going to mark the street address on the bins before they drop them off on the lid and the can. So we do get reports of neighbors accidentally taking other people's bins, because when they're, you know, thrust back after being dumped into the truck, sometimes they end up not in front of the house that they came from, so folks can get confused. Also, just as a general PSA, please do not put your bins out on a night where it is supposed to be heavy winds and rain. You will lose your lid in high winds, and then you will not find it again. So it is just a best practice to weigh it down with a brick or just hang on to it and put it out first thing in the morning, just to try to reduce the loss from weather events. Okay, moving on, food truck vendor registration. So this is a new vendor registration form that we're looking at instituting. We have more and more requests for food trucks at events in the borough, so First Fridays, Movie Nights, our Food Truck Festival, Fourth of July. And this is just a way for us to make sure that we are covering our bases from an insurance purpose. These are vehicles that are parked on borough roads for periods of time, and we just want to make sure that they are valid operators. So we came up with a vendor registration form. It's similar to a contractor registration form. It is the same price, it is twenty-five dollars. They do also have to register for B P T. So this is not an approval for an event. This is just like a contractor registration for them to operate in the borough during any given calendar year. So same thing, these registrations will be valid for a year. They give us a copy of their certificate of insurance with the borough listed as the additional insured, and that is an annual renewal that they will then need to submit. The plumber registration, so when we had broken down the, if you recall, the last time we updated the fee schedule, the commercial versus the residential contractor, we neglected to catch that the plumber registration also was only listed as the one, one hundred dollar fee. So this is just us breaking it down to have the residential and commercial separation. Same with general contractors, so now general contractors and plumbers have the same registration for residential and commercial. So that's just to bring that together. And then we've been working hard on our special event permit, lots of discussions about how to organize this. You know, we discussed it as well in the past, so we are at a point now where we are ready to launch this. This would be a hundred and fifty dollars for special events. We have a definition of what constitutes special events. And we did have one question that we wanted to propose to you in regards to the actual special event. Are we discussing this now during the fee schedule, though?
It's not a special event.
Okay, so we're just going to raise it now. It's not part of the fee schedule, but we did want to ask. So we explained already that legacy events, so that's any event that was operating for ten consecutive years or more prior to twenty twenty-five, excluding COVID years, is going to be classified as a legacy event and exempt from the application fee. The fee would, though, apply to anything that doesn't fall within that definition. For special events, though, in the memo, it lists the definition of what we're including here, which is a pre-planned single event or series of events that because of its nature, interest, location, promotion, or any combination of similar influences, is expected to draw one hundred or more people, proposed to be held on public property or on private property but impacting public roadways or property, and/or requiring the use of public support services for the purposes of entertainment, celebration, amusement, cultural recognition, arts and craft displays, indoor sales, special sport competition, block parties, or similar activities generally considered recreational in nature. It's a mouthful. What this includes in it, though, is that it calls out block parties specifically. We do have a separate block party permit form that exists on its own. And second, this definition, we crypt this, by the way, from Phineas Silvero, it has, it has the inclusion of events on private property. So by definition, this is for any event that draws one hundred or more people. So generally, I would not be in favor of regulating events on private property. So I just want to get your take on it in terms of the definition. And I'm sorry, I know this isn't the fee schedule necessarily, but this is important from a definition standpoint. If we want to table it, we don't have to discuss it right now. But the question to you is, do we want to include a definition that regulates private events? Mind you, it would be private events that would draw a hundred or more people. So then this would be like a large graduation party, or a wedding party, or, you know, some other kind of large gathering on a private property. I'm not sure that there are many properties in the borough privately owned that could accommodate a hundred or more people. But that would be, the question before you is, do we want to regulate and require them to get a special events permit for that larger private gathering, or take private events off altogether?
I mean, there's the churches, they're not, they're, I assume regularly getting a hundred people. We definitely do not want to regulate churches.
Norbert Community Theater was still here with them.
I think I would say that if they're asking for borough services, if it's a hundred or more people, and it's either on borough grounds, or they ask for borough services. Like if they, if they ask for security, or if we have to shut down the roads.
But that's and/or, so, yeah.
Yeah, so I would take out the or.
I, I think.
You say and/or.
I think if it's.
Well, not necessarily, because there are things that qualify as special events that may not necessarily require support services, that may not require like police or Public Works presence for it.
I would say if there's a hundred or more people on public property, or if it's private property and it requires borough resources beyond closing a road, which we already do, I mean, anything, anything, anything that requires an active borough presence. Is there a way to create that? Like if you have to be an officer, or if there has to be someone from Public Works there, but if it's just.
Well, there has to be.
I'm a family, we would be paying for it. I mean, we're not providing private security for it.
Well, and we have a permit, I mean, it's both. But we can't regulate weddings, we can't regulate.
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, I'm having a blowout birthday party, and it's an open house all day. There might be a hundred people that show up.
Yeah, but I don't want to regulate that. Do you want to regulate that?
No, that's what I'm saying, is that I, that just sounds wrong to me.
But that's fine, but that's fine, so you do it. But what I hear you kind of saying, and you say, and you're saying, can you please shut down the road? Because I. Because I, right.
Right, or send a cop to direct parking, right. That's why I would say if it's private and they request the use of our.
Yeah.
Resources.
Resources thing, yes. Yeah, our staff, yeah.
Yeah.
Our staff.
Our stuff we're saying, private with a hundred or more and require public staff. Yep. Okay, so those are the three criteria to regulate pu- private events.
Right, right.
But the, so, but the principle behind these fees is they're only meant to recover costs.
Right.
So there's the application fee and then as part of the required application review, it'll go to admin for review. It'll go to police for review and it'll go to Public Works for review and the fire company for review. So the application fee, that one hundred fifty dollars really just goes to staff time for the administrative processing. And then if that event requires additional services, then the police or Public Works, then we will, or, you know, we rent porta potties for them or we set barricades. We will then invoice them after the event to recoup those costs.
And I get.
How often does that happen? I mean, Jeff or John, how often does, do, do we actually get involved in private events like that?
They're not of our property?
They're not of our property.
No, I can't think of, um, the block parties, but I mean, that's just dropping off barricades.
And those are usually less than a hundred. I mean, those are, those are not triggered.
And, and that one has its own permit application, a permit fee already.
That's a, that's a good, yeah.
Yeah.
That one's actually not, we would not then trigger a special event permit for that, legally as a permit.
It's maybe, maybe we don't even have to. If we, if we don't do it, then we don't really have to include it.
I mean, it strikes me that a block party is more invasive than like a big party in someone's backyard.
We already have a permit for block parties.
No, I'm just saying that like, and you don't charge down.
Right.
There's no fee for the block party, right?
There is.
Oh, oh, I didn't know that.
Can we keep the end utilized services on the freak case that we get one, then you have it at your discretion?
Yeah, okay. So I don't think it's likely to turn, but I definitely don't wanna regulate religious services.
Yeah, we can reach over, okay.
What is the block, uh, party fee?
I mean. It's the application fee, isn't it like fifteen bucks or something?
I thought it was twenty-five.
Um.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, it's also partly so that we know when they want the street blocked off, so.
Yeah, no, I, I'll go with that.
Yeah, cause we have to set up the, um, the, um, fees.
Right, and, yeah, you don't have to tell me right now, but it's not a hundred fifty dollars.
Okay. So do you, are you, uh?
No, no, no. Okay, so that, that, that does it for the fee schedule.
Alright.
Um, so thank you for your feedback regarding the definition, so the, um, so those are the fees, right? So the E V charging, the recycling bin replacement, the food truck vendor registration, the rightsizing of the plumber registration, and then the new special events permit. So this is a new permit, new fee.
Okay. Any other questions or to need you?
Can I, can I ask a quick question?
Jean. Go ahead, Jean.
Um, oh shoot, I just lost my question. Uh, for, oh, so for these special event permits, the only thing I'm, um, I had a question, like a lot of these events, often they don't know how many people are attending them, whether it's like, uh, uh, under one hundred or over one hundred.
Mm-hmm.
So how are we managing that?
It's just based on guestimates really. I mean, we're not gonna sit here with a little counter ticker and say, oh, you actually have less than a hundred people, so you don't actually qualify for a special event. We're not gonna know that until the actual event itself. Um, so it's, it's more of a, a guesstimate. So theoretically, any, any event under this would just qualify as a facilities rental. And then anything over this hundred people threshold would then trigger the special event. But we do reserve the right to, you know, make that determination depending on what sort of services they, they require. Um, you know, from a police and Public Works standpoint.
Probably if they're asking for porta potties, they're gonna be over a hundred, don't they?
Yeah, if you're requesting porta potties, you probably have over a hundred. And so even, so, so we're gonna, we're gonna go with this and we're gonna implement it and we're gonna see how it actually gets enforced, um, in the wild. Once, once people start engaging with it and using it. So if there's tweaks that we need to make to the application form or the threshold or something like that, we will certainly go back and revisit that. Um, you know, this is an iterative process. I wish I could say that I could get it right on the first time, every time, but we do feel that this is a really strong, uh, permit form and captures, um, the, the types of events that we are seeing being held in the borough. And so we feel that this is an appropriate threshold.
I, I could see something where if somebody rents the big room, um, for a, a party or something, and then, um, the houseman generally set up chairs and table, would they get charged for that or, uh?
No, so that would be a facilities rental. So if you're only renting the multipurpose room,
Okay. Yeah.
that is just our regular facilities rental.
Even if so, we're a hundred people.
Correct, okay, yeah.
Cause that doesn't require that much resources. I mean, just a little extra setup time, yeah.
Okay.
Cause that's. Yeah, that's, that's whatever the, the facilities rental then is for that.
That covers that.
Yeah.
Cause like in, uh, last year, we had a ton of events there that were not borough events, but, you know, uh, political events or different things where,
Yeah.
you know, groups.
But they're referring to private property versus private events.
Right, right. Right, but, or renting on borough proper, property is what, is what I was thinking, yeah.
Right.
Yes, so in, in the special event permit, we have a checklist of where this would be held. So this is all of our, like, external sites, so the park, the ball fields.
Okay.
What if, what's, what do we have on our list?
Um, skate park.
Skate park.
Can be rented.
Downtown area?
Downtown.
Station Circle.
Yeah, so we did Station Circle slash downtown was one, so you have to pick one of the, one of, it's not open ended. You can't just say, I wanna go anywhere. We're only allowing special events in certain areas.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
And so we give you the defined list of where those special events can be held.
Okay.
If you wanna hold a special event here at Borough Hall in the multipurpose room, that is a facilities rental. It's not a special event. So you can have a hundred and twenty, whatever the max capacity is of the room.
Okay.
Um, and that doesn't fall under as special event because likely you don't need Public Works putting up barricades. You don't need police, you know, so you don't need porta potties. It's indoors. We have facilities. So it's a different piece.
Different thing, okay. Just making, making it clear, yeah.
I had another question. So I'm just like, I'm trying to think of like, um, different events that this might be applied to. Um, for example, like the Narber Cycling Club holds the holiday rides or the Halloween ride. Um, would that trigger this hundred fifty dollars special event permit fee?
Does it require closure of roads?
Um, so, the, no. Um, the last two times or last three times, we had, had it right on the bridge, at the foot of the bridge, uh, on Narber Avenue. Um, so there weren't any official barricades, but we were taking up that space on the public road.
Could we, you know?
Yeah, I don't know, Jean. I'd have to think about that one and, um, we can talk more about that offline. But, yeah, there's, there's some nuance in terms of kind of when this gets triggered.
Right.
That's, I think that's a good, a good example for us to kind of test the, the boundary of where this applies. Um, so what we're doing right now is just adopting the fee schedule for the application fee. Um, but if you wanna talk more offline about kind of what events would actually fall under the special events permit, I think we can do that, um, a little bit, a little bit later. And, and if we need to then update the form itself, we can certainly look at updating the form, but if the, the fee is gonna, we're recommending the fee as what the fee is as one fifty.
In that same vein, and it just made me think of it, is the Halloween brand.
Um, we block, that's a legacy, that's a legacy.
That's what I'm saying.
I wonder Maggie, can you put a little thing in there like staff discretion? Cause you're never gonna, we could sit here for the next four hours and debate all the events that you're actually gonna come up with.
Yeah.
I think I just trust that you all are going to understand.
And, yeah, and again, that's why I said earlier that there is a discretion. So if somebody comes to us and they say, I wanna submit for an application for something, we can take a look at it and say, actually, you qualify as this. And therefore we will process it under this, um, because we're never gonna be able to capture everything.
Never, yeah.
And, and I recommend you don't put that in.
Oh, don't put use discretion?
I don't think it needs to be in there. I think it's just instructive.
The student, oh, okay.
You're, you're begging people to say.
Okay.
Yeah, picking favorites. You're, you're playing favorites.
Yeah, like the cycling.
Alright, so we're gonna, we're gonna try this out for the year and see how it works. And if there's problems, you can revisit this next year. That's the recommendation. And as we said, Westchester has a very similar structure and they seem to be doing fine with it, so.
Yeah, so we, we looked at a lot of similar municipalities, so Media, Phoenix, the Westchester, um, Lower Maryland.
Was it Westchester, Phoenix, Westchester?
We looked at both.
We looked at both. So, you know, other, other municipalities, um, that have, you know, similar development patterns and number of events. So again, we, we feel very confident that this is going to be a good capture for us. And again, we can always revisit it if it turns out that it doesn't capture what we need.
Alright. Alright, let's vote on the, uh, fee schedule update. All those in favor? Okay, it is unanimous. Thank you for all your work on it. Uh, I mean, budget amendment.
Wait, budget?
No.
Uh, sorry, borough streets. I'm just skipping over. Alright, uh, Cerise name E.
Did you recuse yourself on this?
No, maybe if it were, there's enough people involved that I don't think I do.
Okay, alright, then why don't we, um, have this, okay.
I'm like one hundred and fifty people or something.
We're just authorizing the advertisement, not funding a little bit.
That's also true. This is, anyway, we need a motion.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, let's move on. Okay, I move the Borough Council authorizes the advertisement of public hearing for the purpose of considering the adoption of ordinance number ten six five, accepting the dedication of Fox Hall Lane, now we're laying Handsome Court as public streets of the borough.
Same. Okay. So, I wanna, must explain, John.
I, I'm happy to start. You, you may remember, it's probably over a year, if not more, this came before you for just Fox Hall Lane. At that point, it was approved for advertisement, but due to changes and borough administration, it just never got off the ground. Since that time, uh, through, uh, I think a more aware Public Works Director, it was also brought to our attention that, um, there are other, uh, undedicated streets that we have been also maintaining like Fox Hall Lane, being Narbe Land and Handsome Court. Um, my understanding, if I'm correct, if I'm wrong, that we have long been maintaining those streets and treating those streets like they are the borough streets. However, there is no real, uh, any history of any formal dedication or acceptance of dedication by the borough for those streets. These particular streets are streets that the borough is, uh, finding acceptable for ownership, meaning that we don't believe that we're taking on any excessive liabilities, uh, based upon their conditions. Um, and the borough's staff is aware of the condition of those streets. And they would also qualify for liquid fuels funding, uh, which means that we would actually receive money back from Pendot for maintaining those streets. My understanding that maybe we've been maintaining them without actually getting the liquid fuel funds. And Pendot has requested that we put these on the list. Uh, we can't go to say that they're ours. Arguably, they are through an implied dedication, but it's, I think, a, a better form. And I think Pendot's wanting us to attach some sort of documentation that shows that these are our streets. Normally, if a new development was to be built today and a new street was to be done that the borough would then maintain, they would offer a needed dedication that we would then accept. Again, we can't do that, uh, because these are, no one owns these streets right now, no one developed these areas. So these are the three streets, uh, again, Fox Hall Lane, Narbe Land, Handsome Court, that, that fit those categories. Um, if this is approved for advertisement, I'll need to send, uh, well, borough staff will need to send letters to the property owners that are rejoining those streets, uh, making them aware of the hearing, uh, to this. Now, frankly, it's within their interest, uh, that, that we maintain these streets. I don't think they wanna have to be responsible for shoveling their own streets and plowing their streets and making sure plot holes are filled. Um, it won't change anything from what has been done in the past. It's really just allowing the borough to collect funds from the state for the work that we're doing. So I'm hoping that they see that, uh, that there's no issues and we'll try to make that clear. Uh, and it does sort of indicate the same in the resolution. Uh, but they, they are required, we are required to give them notice, uh, prior to advertisement. Then we would advertise it, we need to advertise twice. Uh, through that timeline then, uh, I believe we'd be setting ourselves up for an August hearing on the ordinance once those advertisements and notices go out, which is right on time for us to make our submission to Pendot, um, for liquid fuels reimbursement that we need. And I believe there is then a form that we can attach this ordinance to and, and attest that these are actually borough streets. That's the long-term run.
Alright, I'm gonna speak quickly because I, I do live on Fox Hall Lane and, uh, you know, we do not, we have not handled any of our, any of the road affairs. You know, the road was torn up a few years ago to, for utilities work. We didn't handle any of that. We were not the, the counterparties who they said, oh, can we tear up your road up? That wasn't us, so. I think we, everybody, including the borough, including us, was quite surprised to know that the road had never been dedicated because the borough had been, uh, acting as if it were the, uh, were the owner of the roads. And then Cindy brought up whether I need to recuse myself. Um, I think that.
I don't believe, I don't believe so. In my opinion is that the Pennsylvania, uh, conflict, uh, law is clear that if you would enjoy the benefit the same as a class of people that are similarly situated as you, it's not just to you or your family, then there is no conflict. And it's the same as someone was rezoning your district.
I mean, there's, there's fifty or sixty houses at least affected by this, so it's, it's not even just me on my own street where there's twelve houses. It's a, it's a larger group, so.
And, and arguably, there is no benefit to you from this, since it would just maintain this status quo. So I think on both the technical and substantive reasons, there is no conflict for you to receive.
Okay, thank you, John. Any questions here?
I don't think any of these streets have sidewalks on them. Would, would that, does it trigger a requirement for them to maintain sidewalks?
No, um, it would not, and it's very clear it's from, uh, the street lands, uh, particularly in the, uh, the Hanson Court area, uh, because again, I, I think when Hanson Court was created, it should have been the homeowners association. And we've had, I think, uh, issues that arose in the past related to public improvements, the light pillars, the lights, those.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, so this would just be the roads themselves, uh, likely the curving, I would think as well. Um, and anything that's under the roads, but it would not be sidewalks. Sidewalks remain with the properties that they're, they're located. Obviously, if there was a crosswalk or something across the road, but we're not taking someone's property. Uh, we're not moving on to someone's property. We're not expanding a right of way. It's just the roads as it exists right now. Uh, the sidewalks would, would maintain responsibility for the landowners that those sidewalks are on. And if there were no sidewalks, um, the, the borough couldn't move forward with a sidewalk plan to four sidewalks. But again, that would be against the properties they'd be installed on.
Oh. Um, yeah, so I guess I, I have the obvious question of, you know, we, we face the same issue on Shirley Circle. I asked here with paving a Shirley Circle and I, you know, the description of whether it's in the books or not. My, as far as I know, there's nothing that actually shows a form of dedication to the borough. They plow, they maintain all those other things. And I think the only thing that maybe is a distinction is that Shirley Circle wouldn't qualify for liquid funds, fuel funds because the diameter is too small. But I'm wondering, raises the question for me of Shirley Circle in particular not being included, but are there other types of roads that arguably fall within the same, you know, categories and were they included or not, included or excluded, if that's the case? How do we come up with this?
I, I, I would, I would assume that I could defer to, uh, Public Works Director, but the borough, I don't know a municipality that does maintenance and repairs of roads that they aren't able to tame liquid fuels for. Um, so when there is a road dedication, there's, it's usually the borough or municipality would require that it's constructed in a way that, uh, meets the borough's requirements for a street, um, is, and is acceptable based upon the condition and how it's constructed. For example, a lot of municipalities will not accept dedication of roads that have dolged and block curving, cause they don't wanna plow. Uh, if there's speed bumps, they don't wanna plow. Uh, they wanna injure the curb and then have to replace bolted block. But again, if there's no reimbursement from Pendot for that work, it's essentially a handout that the taxpayer extends to the benefit of those people that live on that private. So if there are other streets on the list that would qualify for liquid fuels, I, I'm, I'm unaware of that, but if something became, you know, where we can always do this again if we, we need to do it.
Yeah, I guess the question, so what is it, do we know for sure that Shirley Circle? Yeah, I guess the question is, so what is it, do we know for sure that Shirley Circle doesn't qualify for liquid fuels? How do, how do we?
Shirley Circle is too short of a roadway. There is a minimum length requirement from Pendot of two hundred and fifty feet of roadway.
Okay, so it's not, it's not the radius of the circle, it's the length?
The radius, you know, there's language in Pendot's requirements for it, you know, if it was built, you know, pre nineteen eighty, you know, the municipality could, okay, you know, having a smaller diameter circle, as long as the municipality tries to acquire land to widen the circle. If the municipality is unsuccessful to do so, we just need to document that, provide that to Pendot that paving truck.
Alright.
Does this include the um, streetlights or not?
No, this would only be the different sections.
So that Hanson Court streetlight issue is, is unrelated to this?
It, it's unrelated to this, but I certainly wanted to make sure it was clear that there's no uh confusion about that and no accusation that we're accepting anything. Uh, which I think particularly for Hanson Court, we had to language this, except it's not include any walls, lights, stormwater facilities, or other portions of improvements of the Hanson Court community. So I think they also had potentially a, a stormwater basin that um is not being uh maintained properly, because there's no owner of, of an HOA.
But like, uh, just as an example, so now we, we, one of these streets becomes dedicated. I mean, I'm not saying any of these streets qualify, but do they then become places where we could do the stormwater pump outs because it's our street all of a sudden?
I, i- if it was in the storm, if it was in the right-of-way, then yes.
Well, that's where they are, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, assuming there's a, a public right-of-way there, then yes, you could do it within the public right-of-way.
Or, I mean, I don't know that any of these streets would qualify, but before, we probably couldn't have done that, right?
Did you consider the, those streets when you were doing your analysis, or when Pendot was doing the analysis, Jeff?
Yeah, because initially, you know, I'm certain that Norwood and Fox Hall, you know, would qualify for the low volume, you know, which we used to obtain the grant funding. Uh, but we had to get them in in our Pendot system first, so I-
So they haven't been considered yet?
They have, so they, yes, so they, they were two of the recommendations, okay, so they're-
Okay, so they're, they're, but we can't do it until, yeah, okay.
And same part, it, it wouldn't include any plantings, for example, if there were any beds or outside or gardens that are outside, which I believe Fox Hall Lane has an area, but is not-
Yeah, I'll get to that in a second. I see Jean has her hand up though.
Oh, um, I couldn't really hear everything that Jeff was saying, but I do think he answered my question about the cul-de-sac radius, um, because the, the minimum is fourteen feet, but you're saying that, um, pre nineteen eighty, it, it can be lower than that for the cul-de-sacs?
It can be with a little bit of homework on our end, but all of the roads that were attempting to add have cul-de-sacs that are ten or fifteen feet in size more than that.
Okay, so, um, they, they would still be able to receive the liquid fuels to, funding for that, for that?
For, for which road?
And then?
Hanson and Fox Hall.
Oh, for, for Hanson, Fox Hall, and Norwood?
Yes, and every box was checked, and not before we brought this to John and the council. And, and that's really the reason that this ordinance is being enacted, is so we have something to provide Pendot that says we own these roads. So we can get the liquid fuel funds for these, because they qualify as a, one of them.
There's no sort of like implication, like we do that, there's no sort of implication of, okay, well, you have to repave these once every fifteen, that's out of discretion relative to the condition of the-
Correct.
I mean, I don't think any of these streets are, you know, high priority for repaving.
No, 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 they're, they're certainly not, right?
They're all very live on.
Yeah.
It's just that they're cul-de-sacs.
Yeah.
Um, okay, so, as you pointed out, there is a, there is a stretch of Fox Hall that is just a planted area. It is, it is a green space. It's marked on the map as part of the roadway, but in reality, it's a, it's got trees and it's a, um, it's, it's a planted area. Are you saying that we're not, the Borough is not taking possession of that because it is not part of the road?
Correct, and it says the road bed and related public road improvements located under or within Fox Hall Lane and used by or for the public right-of-way of Fox Hall Lane.
So who owns it then?
I, I believe, I thought I'd be looking at a parcel map and it indicated it was associated with the-
So if we go to the, if we go to the map, there's a map on, I mean, I can, you, you, there's a map in the ordinance that I can discuss with you here. Apologize for this, but uh, since it is across the street from me. Okay, it looks like it's page seventy-two of the packet. If we can put it up on the screen real quick. Alright, well, it's page seventy-two of the packet. There's a, there's a, there's a gate marked there from um Narborough Park's access road. That leads into about a fifteen-foot strip of greenery. Um, the the house on the corner near the, there, there's this triangular plot that sticks out. The, the greenery extends a little north of that into Fox Hall Lane itself, and it continues all the way to the end of the, of Fox Hall Lane. So there's, there's a, there's a strip that I have no idea who is gonna own it, if we, uh-
Cause that, Fred, that, well, I can't pull up this live life.
The Borough has been maintaining it in the past. The Borough has done some reading.
Has been knowing it.
Well, I don't know what the Borough, I mean, the Borough's been in there not very often, but uh, Jeff, Jeff can-
Enough to avoid, you know, calls.
Yeah, so like a couple times a year.
Yeah.
So is this the space that it could theoretically, you could pave over and connect it to Narborough Park?
Yeah.
Okay.
In theory, you could, it's the access road to Narborough Park. It is not the main road to Narborough Park, but it's where that little gate is.
Yeah, who controls that gate? Cause it's so blocked.
Yeah, it's our, it's the neighbors on Narborough Park. They don't want to, they don't want people going through there.
Oh, it's not theirs?
It, it's unclear whose it is. I don't know, the access road is theirs.
So does this make this ours?
Yeah.
Well, it makes everything north of the access road ours. So I think they can still close off access to their access road.
The, the little triangle within Fox-
That belongs, the little triangle belongs to one of the, the plots on the, uh-
Correct, that belongs to thirty-one Narborough Park.
But there's about ten feet north of that triangle, or maybe fifteen feet, that is a green strip. It is, and it extends all the way to the end of the road. Um, so I don't know what that is, fifty feet, sixty feet?
Wait, this thing right here? It look like Narborough can have the triangular-
No, that's not it, alright. Go, go back, it's, it, no, it's north of the triangle, goes like that, like that.
Well, if, uh, again, if it's located, if it's located within Fox Hall Lane.
It's located within what is marked on this map as Fox Hall.
Well, then it would be, it would be, it would be then owned by, I mean, with, that's, it isn't something that we need to consider for purposes of liquid fuels. It's likely going to be owned by the Borough.
Okay.
Because there's nobody else to own it. It seems like we're maintaining it anyways. I don't believe there's any benefit of including that specifically uh within the ordinance, but I don't believe that means we need to stop doing, treating it as we're treating it right now. I mean, if someone else was to try to claim ownership to it, clearly it's in Fox Hall Lane.
Yeah, Fred, make it one off.
And it does appear that there's a little alleyway. I mean, it's questionable when Narborough Park, which I assume is a private?
Yeah, that's their access road for the garage, that thing to the south.
Where, where that starts, where Fox Hall Lane stops, is not indicated on the-
It totally is.
It looks like the, that triangular piece is actually owned by Narborough Park.
It is, it is, that's not what we're talking about. We're talking about areas that are not, just that aren't done yet, just not, okay. That's fine. I'm just saying, since we're intentionally not including bits of Hanson Court, I just didn't think. Wanted to make sure that-
Yeah, I, I, I think that's sort of unique because it is within the roadway itself. And again, I think the question is, look, are there sidewalks in Hanson Court, light posts, anything along the edges? Were not taken ownership of.
Yeah, there's no improvements, it's just greenery, so. Okay. As long as we're-
I have a quick question, um-
Just wanna say, as long as we're willing to continue the status quo that the, the Borough will maintain, just to, you know, keep it a little bit-
This, this does not impact that.
Okay.
What sort of, arguably, it makes it more likely that we would be required to, it's what most of course us to, but it's my understanding the Borough's been able to address them.
Yeah, I think that the status quo is fine with, uh, with us, residents of Fox Hall. Okay, uh, Jean?
Is, um, yeah, I was just wondering if, if there is an opportunity here for these cul-de-sacs to, um, provide some public access, pedestrian public access? I know this is a little bit complicated because it backs up into Narborough Park, but, um, is that, is that a possibility that we could look into as a Borough?
Well, I, I, I think that also is a separate issue. Uh, I mean, these are the roads as they're built currently right now. I wouldn't imagine there is right-of-way if these are private roads, maybe there is. But if there are rights of ways, meaning undeveloped portions to the left and the right of the roads, that people think are part of the properties, and it is part of the properties, but we maintain a right-of-way to come in to put, or Pico does, or Aqua does, to put in telephone poles, or we do to force a sidewalk, or expand the roads. Um, if that's there, it's still there, and it's unaffected by what this ordinance does. Um, I don't know if there is that right-of-way or not. It, it would not, we could not compel, this ordinance doesn't compel property owners to give up their property to put in sidewalk. It doesn't have the Borough required to, to put in sidewalk or to maintain an existing sidewalk that's on the property, because that's not on the road. But then the right-of-way for the road.
It probably would make it easier if we decided to go that route in future, right? I mean, if we-
If, if, again, not knowing what the map, what the right-of-ways are for these properties, if there's no existing right-of-way, it, it would have to be a condemnation of that property for the purposes of right-of-way. It would make it easier to condemn because we would also own the road that we're trying to potentially plant, or put in a sidewalk.
Right, or you could have something in your saddle that says that if you receive a, you-
Correct, if you were gonna go through a land development, for example, there'd be a required dedication for the Borough itself, having property. Which, for example, there was some subdivisions recently where that was a waiver, because there, there's already sidewalks there, and there's no need to have that additional right-of-way dedicated that they would have liked to have been required to do. If there was no sidewalk, maybe you wouldn't wanna grant that waiver, because you'd wanna have that provision.
I know it's something that Lower Marion Township has done in several cul-de-sac areas where they just have a township easement uh connecting like, you know, two different cul-de-sacs that might not otherwise be connected, and it's just, it's just a pedestrian path. So, um-
That, that's something that, luckily, we've got a, a lot of good planners on council and on staff. But I, I think now, again, if there was a new land development going in, where they were building a new road and a new development, part of that land development would require there, or maybe the saddle would require there to be uh an easement given for a fu- a future connection or pedestrian connection, uh to not make it a dead end. Uh, but again, that planning expertise and thought probably wasn't put in when these, uh, films were put in. But-
Is there anything that we need to consider here to just make, to leave open that possibility, if it is possible?
No, I mean, obviously, if there are pedestrian connections you would like to have, you can always ask to see if people would wanna provide easements for their benefits. You could always buy easements. You could always condemn for purposes of an easement. Again, that, that's the option, not saying that's what you wanna do, but, um, you could, you know, for example, I represent a municipality that came up with a master trail program, and they decided, hey, we're gonna, we're gonna, here's the trails we want. If you're doing land development, we have a right to put these trails in. They ended up, you know, condemning and buying rear portions of properties to put in trails. It's really up to you for planning purposes. It's obviously easiest when there is a new land development going in. And I'm assuming in Lower Marion, there's a lot of nice, smaller developments going in that have six or seven houses on a cul-de-sac and, you know, dedicated open space and requirements for buffering and then pedestrian connection.
Right.
Alright, we're ready here. Thanks for indulging my side. Uh, let us vote to advertise as ordinance accepting the dedication of Borough streets. All those in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you, everyone. Now, food truck event.
I move that Borough Council approved twenty twenty-five budget amendment number one reflecting a net change of zero dollars by increasing line item zero point, uh, zero one point four five seven point three zero zero by five thousand dollars and decreasing line item zero one point four six point one zero zero by five thousand dollars. Second?
Seconded by Cindy, okay. So this is the food truck event that came before us, uh, last month, right, that we discussed? Um, and supported, and also supported earlier this year. I think the changes that we are making a budget adjustment to account for this, Aggie?
Right, so what we're looking at doing is just, uh, shifting money from an account that we know that we're not gonna spend the full amount on into a line item where we have already spent and may continue to spend some additional funding uh for events that were authorized by council but not previously requested during the budget process from last year. So this is for the Parks and Rec events. Um, they did not, uh, present this until this year. Um, council authorized them to proceed with their events. Uh, but in looking at the budget, all of the money in the special events permit is already earmarked for existing events. That goes to the Business Association for all of those other legacy events. Um, so the money that we spent didn't actually, um, have, it wasn't accounted for within the budget. The professional services, um, this is where we have, uh, the consultants that I'm working with, uh, myself and then Borough generally are working with this year. Now that we're halfway through the year, just about, I know for a fact that we're not gonna use that full amount that we budgeted for that, so I'm just proposing that we shift this. Um, I know that Parks and Rec was looking to create a revenue-neutral, uh, food truck event that was largely in part because they didn't have any budget to work with. Uh, and they did already spend about fifteen hundred dollars for that first movie night. So I'm suggesting what we do is we do the budgets shift for money that we're not gonna spend in one line item, put it towards a line item where we've already spent the money and continue, and will continue to spend some additional money. So I thought that the five thousand dollars was, uh, a nice conservative amount that Parks and Rec would be expected to spend this year for all of the events that they're contemplating. And this gives them a little bit of wiggle room to then execute on those events and make them really, really fun and joyful, as opposed to them trying to pinch pennies um because we told them that they didn't have a budget. So this is giving them then that budget to execute on the events that was already authorized by council earlier.
So, and our?
Yeah.
Alright, looks like everybody is comfortable here. So let's vote on this budget amendment for the Parks and Rec food truck event. All those in favor? Okay, it's unanimous. Looking forward to the food truck. Okay, capital improvement plan project. Fireworks. Uh, okay, I move that Borough Council approved the estimate from Holenderfer Glass Company in the amount of fourteen thousand nine hundred ninety-five dollars and zero cents for the removal and disposal of three fire escape doors, doors and frames in the municipal building.
Second?
And the installation of handles, right?
And the replacement for units, yes.
Oh.
And it was like, open doors.
We're just gonna get rid of them.
That's right.
I'm gonna escape from the fire, you don't even have to go through this.
Make it easier.
Doors are open.
Okay. Uh, seconded, okay.
Uh, so, this was raised by, uh, Ken Watson, our houseman and general knower of all things, uh, of the building. Uh, we were discussing our capital plan, and because we are saving money on the vestibule, and we had additional capital, that we could spend for this year, so uh, this was raised as, uh, something that we wanted to kind of plug in to the available budget that we had. This was already documented and identified in our capital improvements plan, so we just get to check another thing off the to-do list by incorporating this this year. And, uh, we did get three estimates, um, as are in your packet, and Holenderfer is the lowest responsible bidder um at the fourteen thousand nine hundred ninety-five dollars. So this is for the removal and replacement of the three fire escape doors that are on the side of the building.
And, uh, we do have some pictures of the doors in the packet, and they're clearly in pretty dire shape, but not, not fully serving as doors in this, like, it's a gap, I think.
Both in gaps.
Yeah. Uh, so they, they do really seem to be in need of, in need of replacement. Fortunately, we haven't had to use them in a while, but, um, they're- Fortunately, we haven't had to use them in a while, but they're, they're needed for the safety of the buildings. Yeah, they're, our.
Jeff, who's painting the doors? Who's painting?
Depends if we want them, what color you want them, if you want to paint it, then we'll paint them. If you want them black.
No, I just, I'm looking at the proposal, some, one, the proposal were saying, saying they're not painting them. So is Popovich painting them?
We need them painted, okay. Any other questions? Okay, let's vote on replacing the fire escape doors. All those in favor? Okay, is unanimous. Time extension for the Pinoni Bridge contract.
I move that Borough Council approved a time extension of Pinoni Associates' aim from June 30th, 2027, and July 24th, 2029 for construction and consultation service for Narburg Avenue and Bridge replacement. Second.
Okay. Thanks for your patience. Speak briefly about the, the need for the.
And Jesse, I'm sorry, can you talk closer so we can.
I walked in, I didn't know it was the FNA meeting at the time, I wanted to stay out of the way.
All right, you're good now.
Great. To begin with, no need to apologize for making me wait. I believe you guys have been waiting 12 to 15 years for a bridge. Very an hour and a half. Regarding the time extension, and I sent this to Maggie yesterday, the day before, I apologize. So I don't know that it got distributed, but I spoke with our PennDOT contact and do have a clarification on the letter that we requested approval of. When it was initially relayed to you, it was, it came across as communication by us as a time extension on Pinoni's engineering agreement with Borough. What actually needs to be extended is the Borough's reimbursement agreement with PennDOT. And that is a PennDOT requirement. It has to go out to what the designated end of construction is for the schedule that we provided as part of the contract. And it's in your interest to approve that, that way you be sure that you get all of your money back. They also noted that that is tied to the other consultant who will provide construction inspection and management services, TPD, for the construction bridge. Their contract cannot be executed until you have your reimbursement extended through the construction as well. So we just wanted to be sure that that happened prior to NTP to the contractor notes to proceed. That way everything can proceed smoothly. So I apologize for the miscommunication on that. While I'm here, I'm happily take any questions on that or any questions in general about the status of the bridge.
Right, so I'm looking at the letter here a little bit. It seems to be requesting a time extension for Pinoni.
It does, and the letter is in error, that is not necessary. I provided a different letter to Maggie.
Okay, but that's not in the package.
No, so I didn't get the letter. We spoke yesterday about it. I haven't had an opportunity to send it out. It will be disseminated to you all tomorrow so that you can see the language of it, but it reflects what Jesse has just explained to you.
So we may have to change the motion depending on what we're going to be approving exactly. So should, maybe John can think about what, what we need to, what words we need to say here to approve this letter.
I mean, I don't want to.
Just take, take a minute.
I don't want to hold up something that has to be done.
You're right, I mean, we have to approve the right thing. I mean, especially if this is required for our next contractor to set up their contract. We need to make sure that we do this properly. So we'll take, we'll take a minute to make sure we're doing this properly. I have a question.
I, I believe that it's proper to, I mean, since it was on the agenda, albeit, you know, not in the maybe the exact language as needed, it's not that we're adding something to the agenda that wasn't otherwise advertised. So I think we could proceed with this tonight. I think what we're dealing with here is a. So this is, this is, we would approve, the Borough would approve the request for the county's request, the, the, the motion to approve the county's request for a time extension for the current reimbursement agreement.
Motion to approve the county's request for a time extension for the.
For the bridge reimbursement.
Bridge reimbursement agreement, okay.
Jesse, does that, does that capture?
No, I thought county, there should be no reference to county, it's an agreement between the Borough and PennDOT.
Okay, because I was, the letter says the county.
Did it?
Yeah.
That's.
Because I, because I, I looked at that and that was, then I'm sorry, I didn't have an opportunity to reach out. So I need to point out that.
This came up quick and again, I can only apologize for that. The way it was relayed to me, I was under the impression that it was Pinoni's engineering agreement with Borough that needed to be extended until this week.
All right, so right now we have motion to approve PennDOT's request for a time extension for the bridge reimbursement agreement.
Yeah, if, if I may, so from Jesse's email says, yeah, so yes. The request is of an extension on the Borough's reimbursement agreement with PennDOT through the end of the construction timeline that will allow TPD's construction inspection agreement to be executed. So this is a Borough's, extension of the Borough's reimbursement agreement with PennDOT through the end of construction. Is that?
That matches my renewed understanding.
Can we amend my motion and say what you just stated?
Well, we can also, should we just end the motion and make a new motion?
Essentially the approval of PennDOT's time extension for Pinoni's bridge contract.
All right, what I have right now is motion to approve the extension of the Borough's reimbursement agreement with PennDOT through the end of construction.
Yes, yes, that is the language of the motion. Would somebody like to make an amended motion?
I would make that amended motion.
Okay.
Okay. So, okay, so the current motion is a motion to approve the extension of the Borough's reimbursement agreement with PennDOT through the end of construction. That is the current motion that is on the table, which is hopefully the language that we need to move on with this. Everybody clear on that?
And there's a letter I will send to Jesse, this will get distributed, that will then affirm what action you're taking tonight.
Okay.
And if I may, this will go as a request letter to PennDOT. We've already spoken with the Assistant District Executive Mayor, who will sign this and he's anticipating it and is ready to sign on his end.
Okay.
And that, and that, and it recovered on the.
I mean, approval of a timed extension, it's PennDOT's, Borough giving PennDOT the timed extension essentially. Yeah, for Pinoni Bridge contract, I think it's sufficiently there. Obviously, you could add additional words, but I think the intent of what the motion is has been reflected on the agenda. If someone had any issues with a time extension, they, they could have came and voiced.
Yeah, they gotta take it up with the people in our. Check to us. Bringing this project through expeditiously.
But I think the agenda provided enough public notice for him to know that there was action being taken on that subject.
All right.
Just one, one question, because I know we're going to get asked when they see, they're going to see this 2029 date and they're going, I know already people are going to say, does that mean the bridge is going to be done 2029? And I think the answer is that's the best estimate of the, when the construction will be completed.
That was Pinoni's responsible conservative estimate at the completion of our design activities. And I do understand that.
Conservative means you don't think it will go that long, right? So.
All right, I do not have the schedule in front of me. Typically, these schedules don't include a period at the end for contract closeout, which is to monitor plantings and such. So there will be a, you know, completion, substantial completion of construction point prior to that four-year period. But yes, we're all intense.
But, but the, the issue here is that the contractor that's going to be doing this work hasn't created a schedule yet.
I know.
So that's what the issue is. So whatever you have.
But that's why I said anticipate it, all right? You know, nobody can look at the crystal ball and say it's going to be done this.
Right, I know, but this isn't necessarily, this isn't a worst case. It's just what their estimate was.
Well, I, I am, I am a little bit unhappy because last year, when we were discussing timelines with Pinoni, the estimate was 2027 completion. And that was sort of the best estimate that was given then. And I don't really understand why we are now being told that Pinoni's actual estimate is 2029, when last year we were told it was 2027.
So, I apologize. I have been in my position on this project for about the last two years. I don't recall that conversation last year, but I will say to you, to the council, that I regret not providing more timely, more vocal updates on the construction schedule as it changed. Over the last two years, we've communicated a lot with Amtrak and utilities. Those were the two big tracking points towards the end. And I know we were transmitting updates on the status of those and you heard that a lot of the time there wasn't progress because it was very slow. Some of what came out of our coordination with them was needs to tweak things on the construction schedule, particularly with utilities. Amtrak does have a large chunk of front-end work on the contract as well that I think will, so you're aware, probably delay the apparent advancement of the bridge construction. Their catenary work has to happen first. Those things developed over the last two years and we addressed comments en route to final design that also yielded construction schedule changes. And at this juncture, all I can say is I wish for your sake, as you were communicating out with people, that we've been more timely and vocal with our updates on the construction schedule as it changed. It did change routinely as we checked the lead date as well.
I mean, part of the problem is that I have been in public and I've been asked, well, what is the schedule on the bridge? And I've been relaying what I thought was, what, what was communicated to me by Pinoni as their estimate of the timeline, which was 18 months, and it's now moved to four years. So obviously.
I also say.
I'm concerned that I have been, you know.
For, for Pinoni's sake, I will also say that I did prior to this meeting review what schedules I could find from as far back as 2022. The shortest duration that I saw was about 30 months scheduled, so I don't know about 18 months. But that still did collapse over a two calendar year period. It was from February of one year to November of the following or so, or two hours. I, we recognize your predicament. And if we can help with, you know, continuing messaging, clarification on any of this with the community, we'd be happy to participate in that.
So, at the last time we met and discussed this, the two issues that were brought up was the changing of the, the approach to having pedestrians be able to cross the bridge during construction. It went from building a separate pedestrian bridge to sort of staggering the new construction to the old. And that was listed as one of the biggest changes. And then there was a, a sort of seasonal bust where the end was going to, the end was going to wind up right in the middle of winter and they had to, you know, add like three months where they could pick up to work again.
Are you saying this was in infrastructure or this was?
This was in the last council meeting when I've been on.
Yeah, we did talk, we did talk about.
Yeah, we talked about that, yeah. It's true.
But it may have first come up at an infrastructure meeting, but I also brought it up at the, at, at the, at the council meeting.
President Bush, since you, I think, received that information, I, I do know that the power managers struggled with trying to get responses back from utility companies related to all the agreements that need to be in place. So I think that probably added some unexpected time. And obviously, as agreements need to be in place before anything stuns, that might also have been something that at the prior time.
Because you're talking about different things. That was the delay, the cut of, to, to, to starting now.
But that, but that is, but that was, but you were making your presentation, you were first informed before that the light was known.
No, no, he was, but he was telling me once we started.
No, I'm saying it was once we started.
Yeah, from, from signature contract to.
I was told something like six months of utility work, 18 months of bridge, which is the two-year.
Not, not the accident date, but the time of work.
That's what the numbers we were presented with.
Yeah, that's what we were told, an hour, an hour and four years of bridge, four years.
Fred is correct, it has been from 18 months from start of, you know, shovel on the ground to 24 months. And now it seems to have extended like to be a much longer project.
Well, so I think it's because of the two reasons I stated, plus the one that was stated tonight about, you know, that, that maybe some of the catenary work is going to take longer than originally. You know, the six months maybe is now longer. Is that right?
Yeah, it, it might be best to summarize. There's a lot of nuance that goes into these construction schedules and they are estimates of, our best estimate of what is going to occur based on the construction activities that we've planned out. They change by the day because of some of the seasonal restrictions. I think a factor in what we've hit. That February schedule that I mentioned that seemed to be the most condensed one that I could find as having record of allowed more construction activities to happen in that season prior to hitting the like blackout for us, which is the January, February, early March months. We account for almost no activity to occur.
I, I guess the discrepancy here is it's gone from basically two years to a four-year project. I mean, 24 months to 48 months, which is kind of a shocking expectation. And for everything you're accounting for, it just doesn't seem to add up to another two years.
Well, I mean, if the Borough had made a different decision about the pedestrian bridge, they've never presented it as, well, if you do something different with pedestrian access, the bridge will be up faster. Which sounds like the, it sounds like we're saying, well, the pedestrian access was changed, but we, we never were presented with an option there.
Yeah, I, I heard it for the first time, you know, last month.
And that's been known for a while, that we're maintaining pedestrian access for years.
Yeah, I don't mean to represent that that decision was actually in the last two years. I believe that does predate two years ago.
Yeah, whatever.
I mean.
I think we should take you up on, you, you should provide us in writing updates that we can then provide to community members via the flash and on our webpage.
And, and an explanation of why the timeline has changed, a written explanation of why the timeline has changed from about two years to about four years that we can provide to the community.
But why do that till we have the contractor's estimate?
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I guess, yeah.
What's the point of it?
Yeah, the I have a.
These are like announcing this four-year thing and then.
I guess that's fair enough.
That you're coming in, that you're coming in three or six months.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Estima, who's been.
If the, if the contractor comes in with a longer timeline, we'll ask you to, to tell us why your initial estimates were off. And you can provide us with something in writing that we can then use as a response if people, if residents are concerned. I think that would be helpful for us.
We'd be happy to provide.
Okay. All right, so we still, any other questions? We still have the motion on the, on the floor to help us move this process along, right? So the motion is, I will repeat, to approve the extension of the Borough's reimbursement agreement with PennDOT through the end of construction. All those in favor? Opposed? Okay, is unanimous. Thank you. Okay. Few more items. All right, we have a escrow, nine I. I move Borough Council approves the release of the final escrow for the 650 Montgomery Avenue subdivision and land development project in the amount of $3,250.00 contingent on payment of outstanding invoices.
Second.
Okay. John, you want to take this one?
Yeah, this is the final amount that we're still holding for 650 Montgomery Avenue. They used to have letter of credit, they would give a letter of credit and provide us with the cash escrow to, to follow up with all of the checks and balances, to make sure that everything is done appropriately. Here is a letter from Pinoni dated May 22nd, 2025, that, that all the work was done and that they approved the escrow, the cash escrow to be released in that amount based upon their observations. And they recommend for this pending the payment of the developer of any outstanding invoices. So that would be something still that the, the office would be maintaining if, if there were any such invoices. But council approval for that release would be required afterwards.
Okay, and we switched already from their other escrow to cash escrow because it is very close to being done and simplify the process.
Yeah, so it's just a small cash escrow that we're holding at this point. The remainder, the, the bulk of the letter of credit that they had had been expiring and we did close out the bulk of that. So this cash escrow was just the last remaining bit to tie them past the expiration of the letter of credit through to completion of the project, which has been completed at this point.
Okay.
And he did note that in the past there were sidewalks that became sort of unheaved during winter. Those were replaced and if they were to become unheaved again, they'd obviously have to fix them just pursuant to our codes. But we legally wouldn't be able to maintain escrows to see if that was happening. But releasing it doesn't mean that they wouldn't have to fix their sidewalks, isn't that the issue?
Okay. All right, any questions about the release of escrow? And this is right, right near you, so. All right.
We talked about this at FNA and I was assured that everything was good, so.
All right, let's vote to release the final escrow for 650 Montgomery Avenue. All those in favor? Okay, is unanimous. 203 Haverford Land Development Maintenance. Two oh three Havreford Land Development Modification.
I move that Borough Council approved Resolution twenty twenty five dash fourteen amendment of the two three Havreford Avenue final ring home. So I'll second it.
Seconded by Mike. Okay.
So this is a situation. Through the inspection process, the building code inspections, this is two oh three Havreford, so a building that for all intents and purposes from the outside looks like it's completely still hasn't had their certificate of occupancy signed off for residential units, obviously, has a nice restaurant going in at the bottom.
I'm sorry, I'm having a little trouble here.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
The, the residential units in the parking in the building is still undergoing the inspections by our code inspection. Through the force of code inspection, our code inspector discovered that certain elements related to the parking garage weren't installed according to the plan that was approved by council. Now, it's common to have field changes when, when work is done. And if not for a reduction of one off street parking space that is requested in the garage, probably this wouldn't be something that's even coming before you, but staff didn't want to say, yes, it's okay if you reduce a parking space without having council approval. I, I don't know if there's any real, uh, which otherwise would be a waiver you could have made at the time if they originally knew that they needed to do that. The reason that that one parking space is being reduced is because of changes that were requested by the utility company for where the, I believe, the sprinkler room is to be located. So it's the water company. They wanted it moved outside for easier access for them to put the utility company to access. As a result of that, there needed to be access to that room from where the parking garage is. So as a result of that, there needed to be a door. You can't have the door swing in because it's a step down. It's a safety concern, so the door has to swing out. If that door was to swing out, it would swing into a parking space that's there, which isn't recommended. So they're asking that that parking space where that door has to swing out just not be there. And then again, there is also a situation where electrical gear was originally proposed at a location, but the utility company asked that it be located at a different point. So again, a small change. The sprinkler room and the electric gear themselves probably would not be of an issue. Obviously, I, I don't think anyone on staff brings this forth, you know, new reviews or filing of a new plan and a plan approval. However, the reduction of that one parking space again is something that we want to make sure council is okay with. So this would be a resolution allowing them to make those three changes I just itemized. It does make clear that all the prior conditions that were set forward on the original approval resolution back in two thousand nineteen remain in full force and effect. That they would have to record after the borough approved it, it was called an as-built plan, which means they would report a plan against the property that shows actually how it was built and not just what was supposed to be built. So if anyone wanted to search the, the property records, it would be compliant of, of record. In addition, the third condition is that they pay half of their outstanding permit fees, inspection fees, and professional review fees and any other invoices that the borough has sent them related to the two oh three Havreford Avenue project prior to the issuance of a temporary certificate of occupancy or a final certificate of occupancy for those residential units of the property, again, not holding up the, the restaurant. And again, that's just a way of making sure that, that they're up to date and sort of staying on top of the money that they owe to the borough as we continue to do the inspections of, of the building. So those would be the three conditions that this plan change would be subject to.
I'm not sure if you have anything else you'd like to add.
No, I had written a memo, which is in your packets. I hope that you have all had a chance to read it. That kind of lays out anything additional to what John has mentioned, so I'm happy to answer any other questions. I'm sorry, the applicant isn't here this evening to explain it himself. But ultimately, the, the field changes related to the, um, the utilities would normally never come back before council. This is something that happens all the time. It's like an internal change and as-built plans get documented and submitted to the municipality. Because one of the utility field changes now results in the relocation of the sprinkler room and then the door swing of the sprinkler room interferes with a, a predetermined parking space. That parking space going away, we felt that that was a substantial enough change that it needed to come back before council to authorize that as a modification to be approved land development plan. Because there's only ten parking spaces, now there's only nine. On the plus side, the zoning only requires nine parking spaces. So the applicant does not need a variance from parking, nor does he need any additional waivers from other land development, subdivision land development ordinance requirements that may have been triggered by this change. So there's no conflict with the ordinances, there's no additional waivers and no variances needed for the reduction in parking. So what we're looking for tonight is for council to, if you wish to authorize this change, to codify that in this resolution. And then the, the clause in the resolution related to the TCO, because the building permit is separate from the land development requirements, we're simply tying this together because we have significant outstanding bills due to us from this developer for this property. And we want to make sure that, uh, we're, we're recouping that as we go through these kind of final stages.
I have two questions. The language of the letter in your thing to us said that the utilities require them to do this. And I heard John say that they requested that it be.
I, I think it's, it was, it's a requirement.
Okay, okay. I just want to clarify that.
Yeah, and, and the, and the resolution itself says it's a requirement, so I misspoke.
Okay, I just want, I just want to make sure that clear to the public that this isn't like, oh, you, you know, they could do something else.
He could not have done anything else.
Right, right. And then secondly, if we said no, what would happen?
So if he said no, then he would need to find a way to fit a tenth parking space on the property. I don't know if you've walked under that parking garage or if you've poked your head into it, if you've walked by.
There's no place to put it.
There's really no place to put it. Um, so I, I don't want to speculate on, on what he would have to do to finagle that. There, it could trigger kind of a laundry list of, of other modifications, which could then trigger variances or waiver requests. And it could turn into a much, uh, much more extensive redesign, re-review, reappraisal process.
I guess my only thought is if he's losing his space there, would we, John, have, assuming that at some point the same builder comes to us with questions about property across the street, the bank property that he spot, could we make a condition of this that he agreed to exceed the minimum number of spaces back there?
Well, I think he would always have to provide the minimum number of spaces.
I said exceed, like that he would agree to add an extra space.
I, I always, I always advise to not condition one property versus another person.
Let's also keep in mind that these requirements are arbitrary. And the reason why I want to state that is because nine was required, okay? If you filed this exact plan today, be liable for us, how many parking spaces would he be required to do? Not nine, not nine, because the, because the council had changed this effort. It's going to be required to do twelve. Now, I'm, I'm going to suggest. No, 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 no. I just wanted to, I just wanted to make that point upfront so that we all just like sit with the fact that these are largely arbitrary and that would be a bad, like, we're fine with this because we get a, we get a, we get a, um, a restaurant out of it, right? It wouldn't necessarily be better if we got less commercial space out. So it, normally these things don't come to us in this like sort of way where they just are in front of us in this sort of like very evident fashion. It's baked in from the beginning and we don't know what we lost, but that's why I wanted to just highlight it. In this case, because it's really right in front of us in terms of the downstream consequences. We heard, right, the entire building is laid out in a fashion around the parking lot. And if you change it in any way, the downstream consequences that are tremendous. Also, a small thing in one, the, I think it's this township building code officer, that probably does need to be better.
Be the case, yes. And we can change that. To apologize. I'm sorry, I'm not a municipality.
That's all. I knew exactly what happened.
I'm, I'm listed too when I'm ready, so yeah, we can.
So there are ten units, apartments in the, in the building?
Sixteen.
Sixteen?
Good, another one?
I think there's four, sixteen, maybe sixteen.
Sixteen, sixteen and eight.
Oh, but some of them are, are, are studios or something?
There's a couple studios.
Okay. So what was the calculation that got him to nine?
What, what's what the code says.
Because it's, it's prior, it's, 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 it was twenty nineteen, so we've made code changes since then.
And there's a shared parking ratio, did you?
Yeah. I mean, he's within, as Mike said, he's within code, so.
Okay.
And I wasn't, I wasn't, I was just. No, I'm just saying, like, the code has, so like, this is the irony is like, this is a new building and it's now out of compliance with the codes that we've done since then. Right? And, and we would, in my opinion, get worse outcomes. We would get less commercial space, we would get less other things. So I just wanted to, to flag that in terms of.
Like, I certainly don't think it was done intentionally to squeeze another space out.
Right. I mean, it's. No, I, I just want to highlight, I just want to use this as a moment to highlight our exist, the absurdity of our existing laws.
Well, it's just they changed.
Yes.
Yeah, I don't hear any other concerns about this particular resolution, right? Okay, so let's vote on this resolution, which is the land development modification for two oh three Havreford to accommodate the utilities' demands.
And subject to the conditions.
Subject to the conditions in the letter, yes. All those in favor? Okay, that's unanimous. Okay, now I have a manhole. Talking about a second.
All right, so Jeff, do you want to take?
No, we need a motion.
On system.
Someone make a motion, please?
Yep, I move that Borough Council approves the emergency replacement of the pipe structure and manhole off the intersection of Windsor Avenue and Grayling Avenue to be performed by.
They have a contractor.
We, yeah, we do.
Right, so.
I'm sorry, it's not in the motion.
It's horn, we, we just got the, um, it was horn. Sorry, do you have it?
Yeah, we're not going to go with horn.
We're not going to go with horn?
Yeah.
Okay.
So we reached out to Premier, who was doing the ADA ramps for the road paving project. Since they're, they're, they're with their equipment and manpower. So Premier Concrete costs twelve thousand.
Twelve thousand even? Okay, did you hear that?
Okay, so, yep. To be performed by Premier Concrete at the cost not to exceed twelve thousand dollars due to the urgent need to restore proper drainage and prevent further infrastructure damage. Second.
Okay. Go ahead.
Yeah, so we, we aim to inspect, you know, each manhole around town each year. You know, a lot has changed in this manhole vault, you know, within the last year, you know, we've experienced a lot of rainy rainfalls. And prior to the crews starting to jackhammer out the old manhole-lit frame, we had no reason to suspect there was a void in the roadway here. When we were jackhammering, the jackhammer fell down through the roadway about three and a half feet. Um, we were fortunately founded, you know, we're very fortunate, we approved to pave these roads, so we could identify this because a septic bus were found at first.
Yep.
So, yeah, we identified a couple of solutions and, you know, we replating the manhole is, you know, the most cost-effective solution versus the precast concrete. So at the cost of twelve thousand versus the precast concrete would be in the neighborhood of twenty eight thousand plus some required cranes and different equipment to bring it in. So with this, you know, this is on, you know, one of the busiest roads in the borough here. And, you know, the public works line item of stormwater maintenance and planning, you know, can't support now this twelve thousand dollar cost to get this fixed.
Okay, further questions here? But you caught this before it became a serious problem, so.
When, when will the work be done?
They are coming out next week, so I have a pretty kind meeting tomorrow with them and the field engineers to go over the ADA ramps.
So soon.
They're going to mobilize next week, so they'll probably start this Tuesday, Wednesday, so it'll be done soon.
Will be done for the fourth, Jeff?
I can make that ask tomorrow when I send.
It, how, I mean, is it safe? Is it, is there a lot of?
So there is a road plate on there now. There's cones around there. We have backfilled it with the rain. We just got now, we'll take a look again tomorrow morning, because if you see in that picture that little hole that's there, that formed after the rain, we had, oh, we can go at this time. So we'll check it again tomorrow, make sure it's safer the weekend, and we'll replate it.
Okay. And just keep in mind that during the fourth, I mean, we have a lot of people, yeah, so just want to make sure everybody's safe.
Okay. Let's vote to authorize capital spending for the manhole replacement. All those in favor? Okay, fix that in. Okay, final item is more escrow.
I move that Borough Council approves the release of the final escrow for the ten Seabine Avenue slash two forty three North Wood Ave subdivision in the amount of one thousand five hundred and seventy eight dollars, zero cents. Contingent on the payment of any outstanding invoices.
I'm sorry, Jim, we have the correction to that amount earlier today at F and A.
Okay, which, uh, simply withdraw your motion, make it. All right, I withdraw that motion. Where am I going to find that amount? Is it in the F and E packet?
It's, yeah, it's, it's been posted to the device. There was a device packet sent out. And in council packet.
All right. Does someone else have that at hand? That, it's going to take me a minute to.
That's here. Let me get you the number.
Okay.
It's one five seventy.
No, that's what I read.
Oh, no, that's the updated packet then.
Yeah, fifteen seventy eight. Yeah.
Didn't I say that?
Oh, my God, did you?
I'm not sure. Well, go ahead and say it again. It's no harm.
Well, you have.
All right, I already withdrew, so.
Try.
Anyway, okay, I move that Borough Council approves the release of the final escrow for the ten Seabine Avenue slash two forty three North Wood Ave subdivision in the amount of one thousand five hundred and seventy eight dollars, zero cents. Yeah? Uh, contingent on the payment of any outstanding invoices.
Second.
Okay.
Okay, so this is one of our subdivision plans that was recently wrapped up as part of the approval resolution passed by council. One of the outstanding items was that they had to supply all of the reported deeds for the two new lots, uh, two existing lots. If you recall, this was a portion of the rear yard from one lot was shifted to the rear lot of another parcel, you know, L-shaped fashion. Uh, so we were just waiting on documentation that the new deeds showing the new property boundaries for both lots had been recorded. We did receive that documentation earlier this week, and so we checked all of the invoices. The amount that they provided in escrow was greater than what we ended up spending in total for the, this particular subdivision plan. Uh, so we will be remitting the balance back to them. This project is otherwise completed. There was no financial security. There was no land development. It was just a subdivision-only plan. The plans have been recorded, the deeds have been recorded, all outstanding payments have been paid, so this one is good to go.
Okay. Further questions or comments? All right, let's vote to release the final escrow for a ten Seabine Avenue, two forty three North Wood Ave subdivision. All those in favor? That's unanimous. That is it for our consideration items. We have no discussion items. Let's move on to committee reports. They just met.
Oh, F and A, yeah, we met earlier this evening and we have pretty much finalized the Human Relations Commission language. We will see that next month, I think, here. And we are continuing work on the appointments policy in progress.
Okay. Infrastructure?
Did not meet, but we discussed several items tonight.
Public health and safety?
Uh, Public Health and Safety Committee met on June thirteenth. Uh, we're working on the formal traffic calming and safety policy that basically though was on the foundation that Chief String had created and the draft lays out eligibility. And the draft lays out eligibility criteria, a prioritization matrix to help guide the decisions, and a toolbox of traffic calming strategies. And that's adapted from the Lower Marin and Narberth Active Transportation Plan. And we have a working draft circulating internally. So if any council members are curious, I'd be happy to share it. We also touched on some ongoing efforts, the striping pilot on Price Avenue is continuing through October. And the staff is encouraging residents to contact the office with any feedback and questions. We received recommendations from the Police Advisory Committee, which included communication recommendations for the police department. And the committee supported these ideas. And the staff is doing a review of the flow and tree communications for the office. And then we talked about the special event proposal that we talked in the committee, talked about in the committee as well, so.
All right, thank you. Any, what's up?
New business?
New business?
I have one. So I got two different members of the public called me about the pedestrian tunnel underneath the train tracks. There's some masonry that fell down, and then I went over and looked at it. And there's actually lots of places where, I think there's prior masonry that's fallen down. I tried to reach out to Narberth, Septa Police to report it. I don't know if anybody got the message, I don't think anybody came out. I then gave it to the mayor to ask the chief to just go look to make sure that there wasn't any imminent danger. I don't know if we have connections to Septa that we can kind of push the buttons to get them to pay attention because it does look like there's a whole other part. I have pictures if anybody wants to see them, that, that looks like it could be on the way to possible falling down. And obviously, we don't want that tunnel to be shut down and not accessible to.
It's interesting because they've been doing a lot of work around the station in the last few months.
I know.
Including like pressure washing that.
Right.
Well, they cleaned it in front of the press conference.
Yeah, they cleaned it, I mean, and they've been out there a fair amount, but it's just, it's, it's really, I mean, if you look at it, it looks like it's, like, clearly there's stuff falling down.
There's, there's intergovernmental relations or like folks adjacent to that.
The question was if we take a look at it, and it sounds like we took a look at it.
No, but.
We did, also, when I went out and.
That's what Taijiar does.
Based on his assessment, there was no danger that we have to shut down the tunnel immediately. He called into the law enforcement resources there. They said it's basically their facility, like, I don't know what they call it, but they were going to notify that. So as best we can, their police are going to find whoever's in charge of that.
Okay, I just want to make sure that there was a follow-up there because I keep getting asked by the two people who called me to say, hey, what have you heard? And I hadn't heard.
I mean, do we, do we want to have our engineers take a look at it?
It's not our property.
It's not our property, but if it's a hazard.
They said it wasn't a hazard.
If they're not inspecting it, I mean, the police think it's okay.
What I was telling you is that, I don't know, a week or two ago, they were pressure washing that wall.
That wall?
Well, that area, yeah, so, I mean, that.
I wonder if it's a hard wash.
Well, it's not damaged, it was already damaged, it just inspired it to, to clean out.
I guess I, you know, I tried to call a property person at Septa that I haven't gone on before, but I don't know whether it was the right person either, so I don't know, I just don't know if we have, if we know who the right person to call to actually get them to come take a look. I'm not sure I trust the Septa police to tell the right people.
Are they, are you expecting to be notified if they come by, no?
That's usually what like an intergovernmental person does.
Yeah.
I would say identify, because they're usually trained, and I don't know about Septa, but they're usually trained to like figure out who the right person is in a large entity and then make sure that they, they close the.
So do we know?
Well, so we probably, so do you have a contact at Septa, do you have this person, a particular liaison, Maggie, that you can work through?
Yeah, I'm making it to myself right now. I will certainly look into that. I have personal friends at Septa, so I can fund them about an appropriate contact. But I will try to see what I can do to escalate this to someone's attention.
I think, I think right now we just want to hear that somebody has looked at it and determined that it's safe. Once that's happened, I think they can, you know, if they want to take their time on fixing it, we're not going to push them, but I think we would just want to have somebody from there and confirming that it is safe. We've had our initial inspection, but they are the experts.
Yeah, I'll reach out to somebody tomorrow.
Okay, sounds good.
You were actually on vacation or out the day that I got all these calls, so I did, I kind of took it upon myself.
Okay.
I did try to reach out to you.
Well, in my absence, I always go to reach out to Emily. We will try not to be out on the same day.
Any further new business? Old business? Comments for the good of council?
Just a correction to my initial announcements, to reach out, to be, help with the Fourth of July. It is narberthfireworks.org, not dot com. So I encourage all, everybody, here's my voice to sign up and know.
Okay, so we will have an executive session after this meeting to discuss personnel matters. I don't think we will return, take action. So I will, I'll take a motion to adjourn at this time.
Soon.
Okay, so second?
Second.
Comments, all voting to adjourn? All those in favor? Okay, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.